Good evening. We are going to get started. I am Council President Malley Rosado. Thank you for your patience. I would like to call to order the public comment meeting for tonight, March 9th, 2020, to hear any feedback and concerns you might have. Please remember that when you come up, you have three minutes to provide any feedback and concerns that you might have. I'd also ask that you please state your name and your address for the record. I'd like to introduce my colleagues. To my far right, I have Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, Councilwoman Rosati, Councilman LeBron, Majority Leader Clark, and to my far left, Councilwoman Bermudez, Councilman Mixtum, and Councilman Gale. The first person on our list is Denise Best.
My name is Denise Best. I reside at 12 Deerfield Avenue. I'm responding to what I believe is number 21 on the agenda. The voices of women of color vehemently oppose the proposal to remove the residency requirement for department heads working for the city. Resident employees who have risen up through the ranks, 10, 20, sometimes 30 years, are far too often overlooked for top management positions as it is. To remove the residency requirement would exacerbate that problem. I ask you, why should someone earn a top salary here in Hartford, then take that salary home to a suburban town, pay significantly less taxes on it than their colleagues who are loyal Hartford residents? The only thing worse that I can think of is the habit that we have had over the past 10 or 20 years of hiring people who are from another state to take these top management positions. Those people who have no allegiance, no institutional history, or knowledge of the issues, the problems, or the people here in the city of Hartford, who come then often being shuffled out of their own jobs. Because who, when you want to get somebody, get rid of somebody in a top position, you give them glowing recommendations. "Oh yeah, they're great, could take 'em." And that's what's happened here more than once. I could stand here and name names, but I won't do that. I've seen it happen. I've seen them come. I've seen them go. I've seen superintendents of Hartford Public Schools leave with most of their salary. We cannot continue to do that. I disagree, and on behalf of the voices of women of color, we vehemently oppose that proposal to remove the residency requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jill Barrett. I live at 257 Oxford Street in Hartford, have so for many, many decades. I'm here in support of the council. I don't know if it was a resolution or an ordinance, but it's a business that's coming before you tonight on the establishment of the Madison Park Conservancy. I first became acquainted with Madison Park in the mid-1980s. At that time, I was Chair of the Hartford Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. I was astonished at its size and its beauty. At 165 acres, the lake is one of the top 10 in size in the state of Connecticut, right here, seven miles from the city of Hartford, and the city owns it. The problem that was visible at that time was that it wasn't being cared for. The city had many resources. It had old infrastructure. It was in decline, and that situation not only hasn't changed, it has got to the point where the park is no longer available to anybody. I believe that the city has had terrific experience with park advocacy groups. They help fundraise. They help be watchdogs. They bring in volunteer labor. They bring in lots and lots of asset to the city, and parks become more cared for when there is a park advocacy group. So, the problem with Madison, being located outside the city limits, is that it was a park really that nobody owned. The city owned it literally, but it was in the town of mostly Farmington bordering on New Britain. So, the people who were closest to the resource didn't really have access to it, and had no responsibility, and therefore didn't care for it. So, with the emergence of this new group, which is spearheaded by several suburban residents who are neighbors of the park, I am very, very hopeful that this group can build a viable collaborative unit of people from all areas to bring this park back. And I know there's lots of things to resolve in terms of management, but I am confident that with your support, this group can be viable and an asset to the city of Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. Hyacinth Yenney?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hyacinth Yenney, and I live in the South End of Hartford, Chair of the Maple Avenue Revitalization Group. I hope you're all doing well this evening. It's a beautiful day. We should not be inside. We should be outside. Anyway, there's a few things I just want to talk about. I'm here because, you know, it's 21. The way I see 21, we need to look, we need to revise that ordinance that we have about residency. I think it's really important when we have top jobs. We do have people that actually live here in so many ways. I feel that if you're living here, and I'm not saying because you live outside of the city, you may not, you know, feel great about your job, but I just feel like we should, you know, hire people that wants to live here. If they work here, they should want to live here. That tells us that they really care about our city in general. And it goes vice versa, to be honest with you. So, the point is, I think we really need to look at that ordinance and see what is in that that we can change to encourage more people to want to live here. We want to make sure that people that is qualified that live in the city have an opportunity to get those jobs, that's top job in the city. Too many times, as you said, we've passed people over who are qualified to do the job. So, I think we really seriously need to look at that and make sure that we addressed it. The other quick thing I need to talk about is zoning and zoning enforcement. I'm not sure if you're all aware, and we as residents come before you because we want to work together to make sure you understand what we are seeing in our neighborhood. The lack of zoning enforcement in our city is really making our city look bad. We have banners that not supposed to be in building that shouldn't be there. We have cars that parking on the lawn that shouldn't be there, that the grass is all turned to mud because people are just parking everywhere. What happened to our quality of life? Our streets are really dirty, of course, and the potholes are really big, and I know the winter has been, not been that bad, but still, I think we can do a better job if we have people that can work to make these things better for us. But definitely, the zoning enforcement is really important. You can't just have one person for the whole city, all right? It's important that you, as council member, question the department heads to say, "Hey, do you guys have enough people to do the jobs?" Because if you don't, then that means nothing will change. So, it's important to make sure that these are happening. And I'm not sure how many of you work, drive around the city and see what kind of condition we are in, especially in the neighborhood, okay? The parking is out of control. We need to get more maybe parking authority to get involved, you know, just walking around, talking to people. Some of the biggest thing they're facing is parking on two sides, garbage, can't pick up the garbage because there are people parking next to it. So, it's really important for us to address that. So, let's work on that. And the food trucks, we need to really do something about that ordinance. We need to get that fixed, okay? We can't take the dirt that they leave and the noise that they leave at night. So, please help us to address that. We're here to ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Calderon?
Raquel Calderon, South End of Hartford. I agree with Hyacinth. The quality of life is really atrocious, especially in the South End. Dirt everywhere, cars parked in the front yard. We need to pay attention to the South End. It's been forgotten long ago. So, Hyacinth already addressed it, so I'm going to go to number 21. I kind of agree and disagree in the aspect that if you don't have any, I think it's kind of discriminatory to say, "Okay, we're only going to hire the people in Hartford." We all pay taxes, state taxes, city taxes, and I think you should be concentrating and not helping your friends, hiring your friends, and be political. You should be concentrated in hiring the people that are most qualified for the job. It doesn't matter what color they are. It doesn't matter who they are. You should be concentrating on that. The same thing. Number 23, this says, I believe I'm reading here that Court of Common Counsel is going to select a candidate, a candidate for the best candidate for the city clerk. I've been coming here for years and years and years, and then with, under John Vazano, and it's so unfair, I hear around, you know, through the gray points that people are talking against our fellow worker here, Eric. I think Eric is doing a fantastic job. She has, he has the skills. He's really great. Every time I needed him, he was right there, and I think he's really transparent. And you know what? You should give the opportunity to people who've been here for years, devoted in another position, and not look out, like I said, for colors, friends, or political. You know, you should be more aware of that. You know, we should not discriminate anybody because of color, size, or whatever, you know? I am tired of that. And I was here for the interview, and I think he was the best candidate that day. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Jay Stan McCauley, 77 Wattsworth Street. There's a lot of issues on the thing I would love to talk about. Unfortunately, I'm here as the Vice President of the African-American Alliance, so I won't conflate the two. It is said that every decision in Hartford is a political decision. I think all of you up there know that, as well as the people behind me. So, I am here as a result of the organization that I am a Vice President of has taken a vote unanimously to support Noel McGregor. And it is the hope and intention of the Greater Hartford African-American Alliance that you will look at his tenure and his contributions to the city and give him due consideration. On behalf of the Alliance and in the absence of our President, Aynaz Piggies, I've been asked to deliver that message to you this evening. Thank you for your time, and official congratulations on your willingness to serve the great city of Hartford. Have a good evening.
Sorry. Hi. Good evening, Donna Swar, H. Schultz Place, and I'm here to speak as a resident. Over the past four years, the city of Hartford has funded some new programs, but all too often, it fails to allocate adequate personnel and resources to support the programs, forcing departments that are already short-staffed to bear an even greater burden. It has also passed ordinances that will be, that it's been unable to enforce. We need more budget to go towards basic services, which are fundamental to keeping the city running. We don't need tougher laws. We need tougher enforcement, and that means increased staffing. I am asking the City Council to request that the Directors of Health and Human Services, Public Works, and Development Services provide you with a chart of the number of inspectors in their departments over the past 10 years to help you understand the lack of staffing in these positions. The result of underfunding these basic city functions is a filthy city. Additionally, utility work in our city goes unsupervised by Development Services and Public Works. These utilities perform shoddy work, which not, which would not be tolerated in any of our neighboring towns. Poles are installed, leaving clumps of macadam, and dirt is strewn across the sidewalk and into the road. Our parks are ripped up and left in disrepair. Our roads are a patchwork of sunken squares as a result of MDC, and electrical box installations pop up without any notice, which are soon to be covered with graffiti. We need to increase staffing to the police division, traffic police division, to provide greater oversight of our traffic, to provide timely interventions. We have thousands of cameras across the city, but it has not reduced the number of pedestrians being run down, nor has it slowed speeding cars, ATVs, or other illegal vehicular traffic. Over the past four years, the city has invested around $7 million in our parks, but we don't have the staffing to maintain these renovations, and this will result in the waste of our Park Trust funds. Our recreation center provides very little programming in comparison to other cities and towns in Connecticut. Why? Because there are only two full-time employees. Most of their time is spent supervising part-time employees. This leaves our youth with too few healthy, educational, and appropriate options. Item number 20. It's just a reminder that the Friends of Colt Park sent in a letter in support of the new lease agreement for the Chase Lot.
Ann Gostidian?
Good evening. Ann Gostidian, 80, Weathersfield Avenue. I am speaking as a resident of the city of Hartford and not representing any other employment that I may hold. Two brief things. I understand where people are coming from when we're talking about the appointment of department heads, but I don't know if everybody realizes that these are people who are literally appointed. They serve at the pleasure of the mayor. They are not subject to competitive hiring practices. So, although I feel your pain, and I agree with you to some degree, that yes, I would love to see more city residents have those jobs, again, they're not subject to competitive hiring practices. The mayor decides. The council generally approves the mayor's decision. I wish it were otherwise, and perhaps when the day comes when we have some actual charter reform, that might change. It might be something that people want to think about and about talking about that when the time comes. Now, the other thing is, it's a little confusing because there's three different items on the agenda and the supplementary agenda. Number 23, Council President Rosado Resolution requesting that the Court of Common Counsel select a candidate for the position of Town and City Clerk that possesses the most experience and training. I think that's a very excellent resolution. In fact, the most experience and training should have a lot to do with a lot of city jobs, not just Town and City Clerk. And if that were a major factor taken into consideration, I would say there is only one out of the four candidates who has that sort of experience and training. And then we look at the supplemental agenda, and it's a little confusing because you're saying that here, and then you're kind of contradicting it down here at item number 29, the Committee of the Whole, and the action item, number 30. So, I think what you're doing there is seriously, it's a contradiction. It's a contradiction to that first resolution that Council President Rosado put forth because one totally negates the other. There's nothing against the other candidates as people and as deserving of an opportunity, but again, as far as experience and qualification goes, it would be, I think, wrong to not just give it to someone who can hit the ground running. There's not going to be any kind of a learning curve, someone who's been doing it all along. And we had another potential candidate with that same sort of experience. To me, I don't understand this. Again, it's two things that contradict each other. Okay? That's all.
Hi, I'm Ganon Long. I live at 49 Hungerford Street. I'm here today on behalf of Transport Hartford, which is a program of the Center for Latino Progress up on Park Street, and I just wanted, I came last month and talked a little bit about our work, and I wanted to provide a couple of updates for folks as well today. So, for one, the Complete Streets Meeting happens on the second Monday of every month. It happened this afternoon. The next one is going to be on April 13th at 11:30 to 1:00 at 250 Constitution Plaza, first floor. And I, first of all, I think, and some of you may know this, I hope so, it's really great to hear on the progress that has been made by the Department of Public Works within the last year on enforcing snow and getting snow off of our sidewalks. So, you all know, over 30% of households in Hartford do not own a car. A lot of people get around by walking, biking, or taking the bus. Last year, there was essentially no enforcement whatsoever of the snow ordinance that had been filed by council several years prior. And this past March, this body passed a new snow ordinance that clarified different departments' roles. It allows the police to do this enforcement, but they haven't done it, or for whatever reason, they weren't assigned to do it. So, Department of Public Works has issued over 200 notices of violation. About 70% of those people corrected it after getting notified that their property was in violation, it was too snowy or too icy on their sidewalks, and they ended up only giving fines to about 70 different property owners, and this is going to generate about $8,800 for the city of Hartford. So, $8,800 isn't, isn't a ton of money, but it's not zero. And I think these folks have done an incredible job of organizing the plan, executing the plan, and trying to hold people accountable, as well as doing some education around this. And I think we've seen, in addition to a mild winter, we've seen some big improvements, so that's worth noting. I also just want to mention that there was cake at the meeting, so that doesn't always happen, but it is an incentive for people if they want to go. And the city has a traffic engineer job open, so you all may know this already, but the, we typically have a traffic engineer. A lot of cities like our size have more than one. This person is, we no longer have that role, so that's a job that we need to fill, and hopefully, it will be filled with a Hartford resident. We also heard from DPW that the center line signs that alert drivers to a crosswalk, they're about waist-high, they're neon, they go in different crosswalks that have no other traffic signaling. Those should be out within the next few weeks, so hopefully, you all'll notice that. And that's, has a, they definitely help slow down cars on the streets. And the last thing I would mention, I'm about 85% sure of this date, so I'll update you if it changes, but on April 18th, in alliance with the South End Institute's Neighborhood Alliance and Frog Hollow Safe, we're going to be holding a walk audit at 10:00 a.m., and it's going to be around the Zion Street and Catherine Street area. So, a lot of you might know, this is a series of streets, Catherine Street, Allendale, a number of streets between Zion and Hillside. They connect a school to a park, and a lot of the residents on those streets are looking for speed humps, they're looking for slower traffic. A car recently hit a house in that area, and so, a walk audit is a chance to look at the road and see what we can do to make it safer for people to walk around. So, I'll follow up with information about that, but I wanted to share that. Thank you for your service to Hartford.
Good evening, Council. Alyssa Peterson, Grandview Terrace. Just a few items to get rid of. First, the supplemental, in years past, we've always advocated for not having supplementals at meetings unless there was an emergency. This really does not lend itself to transparency, so I'd like to see a reduction in the numbers of supplemental items. As regards the other items, the residency issue, would you please add Public Works? Public Works must live in this city. We've already had too many examples where Public Works Directors couldn't get here previously. Madison Park, so that's number 21. Madison Park, number 13. I'm very proud that Leslie Hammond and I brought the wonderful couple, Neil and Allison. We met with them, shepherded them a bit, and look how they've grown and what they have created with Madison Park, and I was proud to have helped with that resolution last year. As far as the qualifications for clerk, I've already written you a letter, and I apologize for having to be adversarial if a certain candidate is selected, and I'll, you know, go the complaint route, as I normally do. This last item, item 31 on your agenda, the $140,000 settlement, I am embarrassed. I stand before you today as somebody who wholeheartedly supported our former council president. I did not care for the accusations that were made against him. I thought it was terrible. I thought the city should fight the battle, go to court. I thought the allegations were ludicrous, but I cannot imagine in good conscience what is worth $140,000. What kind of texts were written? What kind of actions took place that we are settling Squalante versus the city of Hartford for $140,000? I, I am afraid of the precedent this will set. What kind of text need to be sent in this city amongst employees, amongst politicians, that warrants $140,000? This is going to open a floodgate to how many other complaints. I sincerely hope, sincerely hope, because I certainly like the councilmen involved here, that what is found after FOI or after whatever files are released, that it wasn't worth $140,000. But I do not agree that you would settle for $140,000 without going to trial. It must be terrible, and I think it's setting a terrible precedence. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Neil Connor's here. I live across from Madison Park, Hartford's Madison Park. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of Madison Park Conservancy. We just wanted to come here to very briefly thank you all for taking up our resolution, for considering our proposal, and just, you know, briefly, the park is located across from Camp Current. 700 Hartford kids go there for three months of the year, and there's a paved pathway leading to Camp Current that has been unused for about 10 years. This resolution, among other things, will, you know, first on our burner, in terms of the board, is getting those 700 Hartford kids back to their beach across the street, and then getting Camp Current able to expand their programming to have more kids come and enjoy the park, enjoy the summertime and the fresh air. The park has been in a degraded state. There are plans on the table to collaboratively work together with New Britain, with Farmington, to provide services for the park, to provide oversight, such as, you know, police protection, and an agreement on the table for these communities to work together. Our goal is to get the kids back to their beach, to get the park reopened for the people of Hartford, and to, you know, get this place back online for folks. And I invite everyone to go take a look at it. It speaks for itself. And this is Hartford's park. We would like it to be open once again, and hopefully, very soon. And thank you for your service. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you taking up the resolution. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's James Williams. I live at 15 Hartford Avenue in Weathersfield. I come before you tonight to support my good friend Noel McGregor for his appointment for city clerk. I'm here because I was appalled by the two recent articles in the Hartford in the Hartford Current regarding the candidates in this position. Quite frankly, I found the articles artificially inflated one candidate while assassinating the character of another through unverified sources, uninvestigated allegations. The article threw my friend under the bus. I'd like to take a few minutes and tell you about the Noel McGregor that I know and I've worked with. I've known Noel for over 40 years. Together, we served on the Hartford Police Department for over 20 years. During our tenure, Noel received numerous merit awards, accommodations, and was recognized for outstanding community service. This is one of the highest honors given by the Police Department. Noel has served as a peer counselor, hostage negotiator, and received diversity management training from the department. As you can see, Noel was a valued member of the department and was recognized as a problem solver. Noel's training in the Hartford Police Department and his years of experience supporting and serving as Chairman of the Democratic Party in the City of Hartford illustrates his integrity and investment into the city. For example, Noel runs the Seventh Day of Ventus Food Pantry. The food pantry feeds 350 families per week. I never forget, this past Thanksgiving, I received a call from Noel, who was panicking and troubled. He said that he handed out 275 turkeys, and he was short about 75 more. Together, we managed to solicit contributions and was able to honor each family with a turkey dinner. And just going back, as my years on the Police Department and attending meetings, I don't think any of the other clerks have gone through this procedure in the past to be appointed as a clerk. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Larry Deutsch?
Good evening. My name is Larry Deutsch and live at 35 Torwood Street, walking distance from here. It's known that sometimes I like to refer, for better or worse, to political events beyond the City of Hartford, like as far as Washington, D.C. And to see the examples where it's not always skill and experience that rule, but only whether one has the majority. And so to be a little more specific, some of those Republicans in the U.S. Senate have only to count their majority and then do as they wish, whether it be to reject a Supreme Court nominee made by President Obama and block it. Or more recently, to deny, and this is pertinent now to this council, to deny the ability to call witnesses to have input into the decisions of the legislators. In other words, if that sounds complex, not to include the public in the process of making decisions as to who gets what in terms of positions and elections. And so to be quite bold, those nasty Republicans in the U.S. Senate have done exactly what they wish, regardless of human rights, what's logical, and what is legal. Now, to bring it here, of course, we don't want that kind of thing here, now, do we? We don't want a situation, do we, where it doesn't matter that much what the decision is, or the legality, or the person, but only in, here in City Council, if you can count to five, five. And that sometimes seems to rule the day, right? Because that ends the question, five or six? And I was told that by one council member recently. Well, we have five votes. Why even discuss it? Well, to bring it still more specifically, to say what I'm driving at, in terms of the decision of Town and City Clerk, we know that many people could do the job. I mean, and some of you sitting on council could no doubt do it, and many people in the audience could do it and be competent at it. But one thing to appreciate is the statement by Council President Rosado, which refers to the most experience and training. Training, competency in a professional, nonpartisan way, like a civil service job. You do well on a certain exam, that qualifies you. If you fail a certain civil exam, forget it. Now, that, all of us admire and like the current candidates for Town and City Clerk, I think. They can do the job. They're honest, and they've done a lot for the community. But that's not quite what, I think, item Resolution 23 from Council President talked about, experience and training, specifically in the job of Town and City Clerk, or being a judge, or being a Department Head of Sanitation. So I would suggest that rather than count, that this council, from now on, rather than counting to five and say, "Well, question is over", include public comment. And I mean, for instance, in the Committee of the Whole, the council members might have benefited by allowing, by the Council President allowing the public to have some say and some commentary, and then make a decision, rather than doing it in a back room and getting five. And that settles it, doesn't it? So this is nothing negative against Mr. McGregor, Mr. Lusa, or the other person who actually could count to five and didn't, wasn't able to reach that summation, a person who was certified, qualified, and so on. And she, of course, is not in the running now because she can count to five, just like all of us. So I say that in general, not to be negative about anyone, be positive about the process. We need in Hartford expertise, talent, hopefully coming from in the city. But there's some relevance, rather than who's your friend, then are there four or five of them also? Thank you.
Elaine Hatcher?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elaine Hatcher, and I live at 83 East Morningside Street. I'm here in support of the resolution that Councilman Clark put in for Ms. Green and that Councilwoman Rosetti and Councilwoman Sergeant Shirley signed on to. I would like everyone, each and every one of you council members, to please sign on to this resolution. Mrs. Green came to Hartford in the early 1940s. She moved to Brook Street. She lived in a room on Brook Street to the late 1940s. She bought a house on Brook Street at 192, where she lived until she passed away in 2014. She was one of the founding members of the Pliny Street Block Grant. She was on their NRZ. She served on the Town Committee in the First District and the Second District. She belonged to Trellis Temple 663, who was hosting a luncheon for her in her honor on the 25th of April. So Ms. Green, I think, deserves to have a sign in her name. Not, I'm not, I didn't include her work in the community as a foster parent or her service at her church. So I would employ each and every one of you to please say yes to Pearl Green Way on Brook Street. And thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Howard J. Fair Senior?
Good day. Good day, Counselor. Thank you for your time and giving us the opportunity to express our, you know, our deep thoughts about the city. I was, a question. I'd just like to know, are we sticking to just the report here, or we can just say what we have to say concerning the city? Anything you choose. Okay, great. Okay, great. I see the report here, so. Well, I did see McGregor, Noel McGregor, and I do know him throughout the past years. I'll start with the report here. I stay on script. I've known him for years, and I've seen the work he's done in the city as a Hartford police officer. He was a fine, you know, police officer. You know, he served the city well for many years, countless years. And he has tenure in the city. And he's really genuine about what he does in the city. So for him to take on, you know, this position as Town and Clerk, I think it's, it's in his, you know, experience and his knowledge and know-how about, you know, the city and where he wants to lead the city, and his genuineness. So if you could consider, you know, seeing Mr. McGregor, Noel, you know, being Town and Clerk, that would be a great thing for the city. I think the city will go far with that. And off the script, I have an issue with far as ticketing, ticketing problems with the Hartford Parking Authorities. And with the city, basically, too. It's going with the parking ban situation. I believe that the city sometimes acts prematurely with the parking ban situation because of the simple fact people are getting ticketed when there's no snow on the ground whatsoever. I don't see, and it's hours before that. And I think prematurely, they act kind of like too fast. They jump the gun in most parts. So I'm, I'm willing to try to pass a resolution where they can, or we could determine, when will the parking ban go in effect? There should be a strategic type of cordance that goes on. Because I think, you know, as a prediction, weather is a prediction. So, you know, when, when people are parked outside and they get tickets and there's no snow for hours, I don't think that suggests to the people. I think they are fleecing the residents of Hartford and whoever attends. I believe it should be a strategic thing that when snow is there and is implemented, that it should be ticketed and towed in that cordance because of the simple fact that someone goes in and comes out, and the car is ticketed, and there's no snow, it's like for hours. It's not fair to the city. So if the city could find some type of way of determining whether or not an inch, or two, or three should signify whether that should be implemented, that'd be a great thing for the citizens of Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public comment section for tonight. We will reconvene at 7:00 p.m. for our regular scheduled council meeting. Thank you all for joining us here tonight for our regular scheduled monthly public comment. Thank you.